Will stand for flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could you read the stake on certification in the meeting?
The meeting has been advertised according to Sunshine Wall.
Please go a roll.
Mr. Manero.
Here.
Mr. Melham.
Here.
Mr. Zangary.
Here.
Mr. Conti.
Here.
Mr. Banda.
Here.
Mr. Bowles. Mr. Corbott. Mr. Graziano.
Here.
Ms. Guammin.
Here.
Ms. Rico.
Here.
Ms. Inogorato. Mr. Guines.
Here.
Mr. DiLorenzo.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
And Mr. Beato.
Here.
We have a reorganization. We're going to swear in one of our members who was reappointed.
Uh, our person wanted to go down next? Or you want to get home? Or you want to do it together?
Together.
I'm sorry, tell them. We have our councilman who's getting reappointed also.
Want to go down?
Do you have any glasses?
Give me your sheet.
I have an extra.
Just a yes.
You guys ready?
Resolution because I'm going to be memorialized. Just get a memorial.
I.
I. Thomas Graziano.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
For affirm. That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I.
I. Thomas Graziano.
Do fur- further.
Do further.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Of planning board.
Of planning board.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I.
I. Donna Rico.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in the state.
And in the state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I.
I. Donna Rico.
Do further solemnly swear.
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Of planning board.
Of planning board.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Can I have a motion with the approval of minutes for the July 11th, 2019 meeting? Someone want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion.
Someone second?
One second.
Please go a roll.
Mr. Manero.
Yes.
Mr. Melham.
Abstain.
Mr. Zangary. Mr. Conti. Mr. Banda.
Abstain.
Mr. Graziano.
Abstain.
Ms. Guammin.
Yes.
Mr. Guines.
Yes.
Ms. Inogorato and Ms. Rico.
Never stay.
Somebody ask you something else, Tom?
Can I please make a point of order? As I did last month, I want to go on record stating that I believe, once again, this planning board is taking place illegally. As I explained last month, we have a member of this board, a Class 4 member who's also a township employee. I have spoken to several municipal land use law attorneys, the NJPO, every one of them is unanimous that this cannot be allowed. This is an illegal membership of the board. Mr. Beato told me last month, you promised me.
Mr. Sheldon, if you have something you want to submit to the board, I'll be more than happy to look down and answer.
You told me last month you would give me a written explanation.
I certainly could do that.
Where is that?
This is out of order. You're disrupting the whole meeting, right? And what happened last week?
I almost says that this meeting is illegal.
Okay. We heard you. Sit down now. Thank you.
May I say something?
Not yet.
Okay.
You can't disrupt this, you cannot disrupt the planning board meeting to your liking. You have an opportunity to speak and now is not the right time to speak. Okay? So there has to be a point of order and there has to be a way to disrupt meeting.
We agree. We agree.
Do you understand?
Thank you.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Conti, you want to handle old business? We have a resolution to be memorialized and I'm going to recuse myself to avoid it in conference.
Right, there's a, we have to memorialize PB 2905, 2019-05, 11 Franklin Avenue, 11 Franklin Redevelopment LLC, Block 2301, lots 1, 1.01, 1.02, 1.03. This is the adjustment of the subdivision. Do I have a motion to move it?
Second.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
And Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Guammin.
Yes.
Mr. Guines.
Yes.
Ms. Rico.
Yes.
And Mayor Melham, sorry.
Abstain.
We have some adjournments for tonight. We're going to start with PB 25004 plus A. It's 91 Terry Street, Block 8902, Lots 1, 10, 11, ABSG 91 LLC. Would you like to make a statement?
No, I just pulled gems on behalf of the applicant. I'm just here to answer any questions the board may have. We appreciate the board's confidence. We've had some meetings with the professionals and they've been very instructive and we're going to revise the plans accordingly.
Thank you very much.
I just want to state for the record that this will be carried and there'll be no further notice to the next meeting.
To the 16th of September.
September 16th.
Thank you very, very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. The next is PB 2910, 107 Baldwin Place, Block 4201, Lot 4.02, and then is 107 Baldwin Owners LLC. We also have an adjournment for PB 2904, 30 Washington Avenue, Block 8502, Lot 3, 4, 4.01 and 4.02. It's GR Masoniwork LLC. We're adjourning part two, 705-757 Main Street, Block 1, 0001, Lot 3. That's Belville Industrial Center, the opposing attorney. We also have PB 2808, 675 Main Street, Bridge Development, Block 9103, Lot 1, and that's Route 21 Associates of Belville LLC. So all these applications have adjournments and there will be no further notice and it will be carried to the September 16th meeting.
So anyone in the audience that is here for any of those applications, there will not be any further notice and you can come back at our next meeting, September 16th.
Yeah, it's Monday.
It's a Monday evening.
It's an odd, because it's just a party, we changed our normal Thursday meeting to a Monday, so anyone interested, it's Monday, September 16th. Applications before the board, we do have PB 2907, 608 Mill Street, Block 3101, Lot 2.02, Mill Street Development Herbal Renewal Franklin Manor Phase 2, seeking approval for the proposed 24 two-bedroom apartment addition to the Franklin Manor. May I begin, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Michael Olivero, the officers.
Please put it on the side so the video tape will not necessarily. Record it properly. Thank you. Is that better? Sure. Thank you.
Again, it's Michael Olivero, the officers, the keys, the cheney, and the gents, obviously, appearing on behalf of the applicant. We're here this evening seeking an amendment to site plan approval, which was originally granted by this board in August of 2014. The property originally was approved for the construction of 154-unit mixed-income senior citizen housing complex to be constructed in two phases. The first phase containing 86 units has been constructed and is presently occupied. Due to financing issues that the applicant has faced with regard to construction of the second phase, we're here seeking to reduce the number of apartments in Phase 2 from 68 units to 24 two-bedroom apartments, with a resulting increase in the onsite parking of 31 spaces. The area is located within the Mill Street redevelopment plan area and the proposed use is permitted. There are no variances or deviations required as a result of this application or the modifications the approvals of previously granted, and I intend to call as my only witness this evening Robert Ricciardi, who is the architect for the project and also is principal of the developer.
Sir, please register again to experience all the truth of all truth and nothing but the truth to help you out.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name from spelling the last name.
Yes, Robert Ricciardi, R.I.C.H.A.R.D.I. Mr. Ricciardi, you are a licensed architect in the State of New Jersey? Yes, I am. If you could please, would you bore the benefit of your educational background? I have a Bachelor of Architecture from the University of Arizona and I've been a registered architect in New Jersey for the last 38 years. And your license is current? And my license is. I would ask you to be accepted as an expert. Please accept your welcome. Thank you. Now, Mr. Ricciardi, you're familiar with this project as both the architect and principal of the developer, is that correct? Yes, I am. And my statement in the opening was that this was approved for 154 units in, I believe it was 2014? That is correct. And it was designed at that point to be constructed in two phases, is that correct? Yes. And Phase 1 has in fact been constructed and is open and operating. Yes, the 86 units of Phase 1 opened in August of 2016 and rented up very quickly and has remained 100% rented since then. And that is a mixed-income development restricted to low and moderate income? Yeah, it's 86 units, all moderate senior housing. And the proposal this evening is to construct an additional 24 units in Phase 2 and that will also be for senior citizens, is that correct? That is correct. Now, if you could please just explain to the board briefly what happened with regard to financing that caused you to make the amendment to the plan of the project this evening? There's a couple of reasons that we've made a change or were looking for the amendment from 68 units to 24. We had found that seniors that moved into the complex were keeping their cars a lot longer than we've experienced in other senior complexes. So if we built the 68 units, we would have a parking problem, especially since it's a very contained site. There is no off-street parking. You have Mill Street, you have the railroad on one side, the river on the other side, and there is no place for people to park off-site. With the 86 units, we always have 10 spaces extra, no matter how many guests are there, no matter what's happening, there are always 10 vacant spaces. So we are looking to build 24 units and add 31 more parking spaces to it. So with the 10 extra and the 31 that we're doing for 24 units, there's going to be a good ratio. We're going to have 110 units and we're going to have 108 parking spaces. We feel that would be sufficient to handle all the residents as well as guests coming on an ongoing basis. The other thing that we discovered is that when we were renting up, there were many Belville seniors that were coming and they were over-income. Not a lot of over-income, but over-income to be able to move into this. So that is one of the reasons that we'd like to see more of a mixed-income complex where these 24 units are market rate units. They're all two-bedrooms and I think that there'd be a good mix attached to the existing 86 units of seniors. Now, with regard to the financing, that's also an issue. The financing, we searched ever since we broke ground, we were trying to look to see some mechanism of financing Phase 2, and we have not been able to find anything that would support seniors at this location. Senior subsidies are a very hard subsidy to obtain. It took us quite a while. I think we started working on this project in 2010 and it took to 2014 before we were able to find it for the first phase, and that was the maximum we could build out of the financing that we obtained. Now, if you could please give the board an idea of what you're proposing by way of the construction of these 24 units? The, this rendering actually shows the both phases and it's the wing that is going most northerly, it's the one that's not shaded on the site plan. It's going to create a T for the, with the core in the middle and two, three wings. This will be the third wing. Excuse me, Mr. Ricciardi, Mr. Beato, that hasn't been submitted. Could should that be marked as a 1?
Yes, will mark it as a 1.
No, the colors are not. Oh, sorry. So please go ahead. So we are looking to build on the existing building, connecting the hallway to the existing building, the people that are able to use the facilities of the existing building and add a parking area of 24 units, which we're going to have dedicated one per to the apartments, and then add additional, the 31, seven units of parking in the general parking area. Now, if you could please give the board an idea of the layout of the proposed units? Each of the units, and we show it on the submission, each of the units will be a two-bedroom unit. And could you please make specific reference to the page that you're referencing? Yes, it's PB 5.0, shows the, an entry area with the kitchen, then there's a large living room dining area, and then to either side, right and the left of that, there's two bedrooms. There's two baths in each, one is a general bath and one is a master bath. And again, these are market rate units and they're restricted to senior citizens, is that correct? They are restricted to seniors, yes. Now, you found an opportunity to review, excuse me, to review a memorandum that was submitted by CME Associates dated July 11, 2019. Yes. And have you responded or are you able to respond to the comments that were listed in that memorandum? We responded and we sent, we sent revised drawings that showed what was changed, what was requested and what was changed. And we were able to really address just about every issue that was picked up, had to do with some connecting of sidewalks circulation, some additional landscaping. There was a request to do a sidewalk along Mill Street, and unfortunately along Mill Street, which really is on the other side of the river, there's with the slope and with telephone poles and things, they really, we're not able to put a sidewalk along. And in fact, your property does not abut on? We don't really abut on it. We have a bridge that connects us to Mill Street. So in your opinion, do you feel that you're able to comply with recommendations of the July 8th, July 11th? All other comments, I believe we can comply and we sent information to that effect. And can you confirm, I also made a statement at the beginning, that there are no variances or deviations required from the redevelopment plan of this municipal ordinance as a result of this application, is that correct? Well, as part of the letter, they were citing that Mill Street not having a sidewalk might be a variance or deviation, so I'm not sure. It depends on interpretation of that. I don't think they're right adjacent to it, so I don't, I don't believe it would be, but... That would be a, an interpretation? It would be an interpretation, and if it is, then we would need that deviation. We would make that request. I have nothing further, Mr. Ricciardi.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. I know the first fight phase is, there's a little confusion. When we say senior, we're talking 55 and older, right? That is correct. And I'm just a little unclear, part of this redevelopment plan, does it affect it because these are market rate? Does it affect the redevelopment? The redevelopment plan was changed to allow mixed use and include market rate. Was changed? It was changed, yes. So we comply with that. Okay. Any board members have questions?
I actually do. We're concerned about the sidewalk that is not feasible on Mill Street.
Yes.
Now, there actually is a development right across from this. Are you thinking of any crosswalks? Because the only way I see is for the seniors to actually get up, okay, is actually going across the bridge, if they wanted to walk to the complex next door, that's going on.
We have a bridge that walks out, we have a sidewalk that goes out without going over the vehicle bridge, that goes out and connects to the sidewalk on Mill Street where the veteran, the VFW is. And if you continue, I would not recommend anything to have anyone cross at the curve of Mill Street, but if you go up about a block, there's a crosswalk that can go over to the other side of Mill Street. Also, the two bedrooms are for 55 and older also? Could the second bedroom be someone that's not 55? The second bedroom could be someone that's not 65, but the, someone that is on the lease has to be 55. And I think that is true. For the first phase, so yeah. Right, right, okay. Any other board members?
What's the difference in rents? What is the loan come rent now that you're using and what's the market rate?
The loan come rent for a two-bedroom is about $1,000. I don't know what the market rent will be when we finally build this and the market would be, I would think it'd be 1,800 or something around that.
From a traffic study?
Yes.
Right, so prior to the Wawa going up, that first phase was done. Correct. Did that first phase include a traffic study after Wawa went up, or how does that all work in with the additional parts? If it matters.
There are going to be 24 more people coming into this. I don't think on Mill Street with the amount of traffic that this is going to have any effect on that. And we originally did a study where we had 68 more units there. And it was more than adequate to have the. Just for the record, the study was done when we approved in 2014. The Wawa approval came a year and a half or so ago. I know I did it, but.
No, but it was done with the mass.
It was done with the 154 units.
Okay.
I'm up and down Mill Street all the time, to tell you the truth. I don't ever see anybody coming or going. It's crazy. I guess they don't leave too often, but I hardly ever. I see some people walking, but I really don't see many cars coming in or out of that project. We have very active seniors though, so I'm not going to. We have one 90-year-old that still has a car.
Wow.
That's as well. Any other members have questions? This is your only witness, right? That's my only.
So one of the things that might be helpful is if you can those.
You want to just state your name for the record?
Marion Puccicord, CME Associates. Do you swear to tell the truth of all truth and nothing but the truth to help you out?
Yes.
There were revised plans submitted in response to some of the comments, and some of the things that you did, part of the reason we couldn't point out, I think you added, you did add sidewalk within the site.
Yes.
It connected some of the open spaces and some of the patio space. You added some amenities to the patio space. And you also talked about screening some of the utilities, but I didn't see where on the plan that was. If you could point that out?
I believe everyone was given revised plans. Most of what we're talking about is on PB 4.3. And this is the revised. This is on the revised plans, where we show the area that is in between the parking spaces, that's a kind of a recreation area, where we have some seating, we have benches and chest cable, I think was added, and it shows all the plantings. Then there's, there was a generator in the back that you had requested to shield, I think that might be the utility that we're shielding. We, there were quite a few sidewalks that we wound up connecting so that people can do kind of a walk around the building. And so we connected over in the bottom right of the site, we connected the sidewalk, we connected the sidewalk that is from the existing patio over to the entrance of the new 24 units.
And the other question had to do with a vehicular gate that's in the middle of the parking lot, and it wasn't clear why that's there. And I had asked for it to be removed because it didn't seem to make sense for me, the morgue, what was going on.
With the market rate, we're going to assign parking spaces. None of the other parking spaces are assigned. So we were planning on putting a gate so that other people just don't wander in, we're figuring out who's parking, you know, in their spot. This way, I think it's just a, an easier control mechanism for.
Did you possibly maybe assign all so that affordable units are not outside the gate?
Well, I don't think the affordable units would feel outside the gate. There are many more handicap spots, sometimes some, you know, it would be a lot of jockeying around of changing spots if you decided. We don't have a problem right now with the.
That's why, that's why, it's just odd because it's a, it's a shared space for all and to have only certain users, perhaps parking spaces behind a gate and everyone else.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's going to feel awkward when we're up.
It's just something, there's no.
There's no requirement for that.
In the plan, or again.
I think this would be a better management mechanism in order to run it just smoothly without.
And the other, the other issue, and the other issue is the sidewalk, it, since it may actually be variance, it may be something to do and deal with and treat that way just in case. But it is true, it's outside the property frontage, and there are substantial impediments to do it. There is a creep there, there's lots of reasons why it actually, in this particular case, can't be done. So there is justification to not do that. And they have added considerable amounts of sidewalk within the site, so I think that that's important. One of the things that I had thrown out there as an idea, but it may, it may or may not work, is just something to do instead of the sidewalk that would beautify the frontage of the, of the site at the street. Maybe some improvements to just decorative treatment of some piece of the bridge or something like that, just at the entry threshold, something that would just add to the.
We'd be glad to add some more plantings, but I.
That might be, that might be all, you know, something like that.
We could coordinate with you on adding some plantings.
Yes, just as the project is going to be completed now, finished off, just to make the front entrance a little bit more finished as well.
We'd be happy to sit with the township professionals. And just add some plantings. Make that a condition, right, that they'll just sit down with you and discuss.
Myself, Tommy, and Marion.
Very good.
And that was it, everything else that was in there was revised and addressed?
Thank you, I appreciate your input. Thank you. Does anybody in the public have a question of this business? Mr. Frank Anton?
Yes, Mr. Frank Anton, 129 Mount Prospect, you have anything about? Sir, I want to follow up on something that Mr. Manuel brought up. Both you and the attorney keep referring, you can turn senior housing. Are you aware of the, are you also a planner?
Yes, well, I testify as a planner right now.
Are you aware of the municipal land use definition of senior housing?
Not without looking at it.
All right, well, it says senior housing is for seniors 60, people aged 62 and older. Now, this is what we originally understood, this is adult housing, 55 and up. Is that correct?
It's used, the federal government uses senior housing and has it at 55 and over, so I guess it's an interpretation of where you get your definition.
Well, again, from the municipal land use, well, we've been here before, it said, New Jersey municipal land use, or specifically it says, senior citizens are persons of 60 to and older. So I just want the record to show, because I don't want the public to think that we are finally creating senior citizen housing.
The record will show you 55 and older, the plan's submitted as such, the application is submitted as such.
It's also, that adult house is 55 and up, so that the record is clear, this is not senior citizen housing. Now, you said these are market rate houses, is that what you said?
That's correct.
The new units are market rate, I don't believe right now double has affordable housing for, but if it were, if these were originally put, that these units were qualified for affordable housing. If these are market rate, then we're not going to be able to use any of these units towards our quarter if we should develop one in the future.
That's not according to federal guidelines, he said you qualify to answer a question, he knows. Do you have another question that he can answer?
It's a simple question.
It's not really a simple question.
Are any of these going to qualify as affordable housing?
They don't.
Okay, well, that's.
They don't.
It's a simple question, and you gave the answer.
Yep.
And one other thing, well, Blackchild at the end was his testimony, so I'll.
Okay, we'll get back to you. Mr. Mufuchi?
Victor Mufuchi, 61 Continental Avenue. Did you say the additional parking would be gated?
Part of it would be gated.
All right, now, in other words, restricted to people, the new addition?
We're going to assign one per apartment as incentive to try to get market rate housing to be in this whole complex, yes.
Without the additional seven?
The seven will be out for anyone to use.
Anybody else in the public?
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47 Flank Street. I just want to thank Chairman Donaro and Mr. Frank Antoni for again pointing out that this is technically a restricted housing, it's not senior housing per se, it's 55 and up. Since only one person on the lease from the two-bedroom units has to be 55 or older, have you done any calculations anticipating how many school-aged children this addition to the Franklin Manor may create?
With the 86 units that have the same restriction of 55 and over, we have zero.
Not true. Again, I'm the only one in this community that has to qualify, so I'm trustee for the Board of Education, I am not speaking on behalf of the board, but I know for a fact that the first year of operation of the original Phase One building, 86 units, it produced three children. I know it's only three, but there were three children whose addresses were associated with Franklin Manor. So when you said there were no children, that's not.
I'm sorry, you know, this super that was hired to run the place has two children.
Two children, but there was a child in another unit, so there were three kids, three kids produced, but that's why I'm asking, I know it's a relatively small number, our district schools are pretty well filled to the carrying capacity, so that's why any new projects here are always, as a private citizen who's worried about the welfare of the education of our kids who are here right now, I have to ask the question, how many additional children will any development like this add to our district? So you haven't done the calculation, so I'm then going to turn to the board and ask, since Mr. Mellon and Mr. Banda have usually cited a Rucker study, and you had all the details about this project before it was announced tonight, has anyone on the planning board done the calculation using a Rucker study as to how many children this new structure will likely add to the school district? Mr. Mellon, Mr. Banda, anyone?
Well, we asked the expert, who's testifying, and you can ask him the question, who's the expert to answer your question, whether you agree that or not is irrelevant.
I would think that this project probably does not apply to the Rucker study, being that it's 55 and older. I think it's probably a much lower percentage of people that are over 55 that have school-aged children living with them.
It may be true, it may be true because the age. You may be correct because of this age factor that it's being restricted.
Well, it's one of those studies, I don't think it's addressed that factor. And we're not going to be adding another super, so we will remain and take care of all of the.
I estimated a half a child.
The super's children are permitted by law. The super's children are permitted by law, they are senior housing.
All right, one person at a time, because she's never going to get that on the record, and then I can't read it.
So the super's children are permitted by law, that would eliminate two, so really there's one child for 86 units, you're building 24 more, therefore you could say it's maybe a third, a third of a child would be my.
No, don't be so facetious, we know that if it's, it's got to be an integer value. We don't know, the fact of the matter is, we do not know at this moment what impact the new addition will have on the school. We can anticipate, extrapolate from these Phase One buildings that it should be relatively small, but we don't really know. It could be, it could be zero, it could be one, it could be 10, for all we know, we just don't, we don't have any idea. So that's, it's an unknown, something that we, I beseech you every time there's residential development, this, something that you really should investigate because you have an obligation to make sure that our school system is properly served by any new residential structures that are developed. Thank you, thank you.
Any other members in the public have a question? If no one else has any question, we'll open up to comments at this time, anybody in the public have a comment?
Yes, board members, especially some of you new members, I just want you to be aware that the, in my opinion and the opinion of a couple of lawyers I contact, this whole project was illegal. This land, I have the deed here, was donated to the town in December 22nd, 1966 from the Andrew Jurgen Corporation with certain covenants and restrictions, all right? Those restrictions were very clear. The lands here ain't conveyed, shall be used for public park purposes, or for the erection of buildings and structures for municipal fire, police, or executive or administrative purposes, and said lands shall be used for no other purposes. This whole project was built illegally. When I brought this deed up to the previous administration, they tabled it because they were concerned, I gave them the deed, and it sat for four months, the dead town attorney pulled something that was from cute, but illegal. They had the deed restricted, this is a deed restriction in perpetuity, that means forever. And it was supposed to be for Belvo's citizens, for recreation, or for municipal police or fire, but this totally illegally. I had stopped buying lottery tickets a long time ago, after that I stopped buying them because if I win, then I could afford the lawyer to fight this. So I want you board members, especially you new board members, this was Belvo property dedicated and donated by the Jurgen Corporation for the citizens, they were a good, community-minded organization for the citizens to use. It was stolen from we, the citizens. So I want you to note it before you vote, you're continuing to approve, if you so choose to vote on it, an illegal thing, a property that was stolen from the citizen and the children of Belvo.
Thank you, Mr. Frank Antoni. Anybody else in the, in the public have a comment? If not, at this time we'll close the public portion. Would you like to read, what would our?
Well, if you choose, the board chooses to approve this application, we do so on the condition of plantings, that would be discussed and approved by our professionals in the meeting. And that would be what area exactly, on the outside, side, on the outside of the bridge?
Bridge entrance.
Okay, near the bridge entrance, if that's the only condition I have written down.
Okay. So at this time, would someone like to make a motion to approve this project with the condition to submit a landscaping project to the front area? Someone like to second it? Please call a roll.
Mr. Vino?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Mr. Condi?
Yes.
Mr. Banda?
Yes.
Mr. Graziano?
Yes.
Ms. Guam?
Yes.
Mr. Gaius?
Yes.
And Ms. Ritha?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, have a good evening.
At this time, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn meetings? Someone second it? Motion to the meeting?